Okay, we're getting started. It's just a matter of a couple minutes before seven, like the closing of the meeting. People twenty, which is joining our pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the number of public religious saints, one nation, the God, and the soul of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Rena?
Here.
Mr. Kishani?
Here.
Mr. Cosell?
Here.
Mr. Malta?
Here.
Mr. Mixel?
Present.
Mr. Dardina?
Here.
Mr. Artuso?
Here.
Mr. Sakman?
And who's on the phone?
Clear.
You're still here, right, Josh? Okay, good.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. All right, with that, I guess we have just two applications to see if we can start with that first.
Webster-Gulf self-storage facility located on the south side of Ridge Road between Schucraft or Webster County Boulevard in LS, Webster Ridge, where we're saving preliminary site plan approval to allow the construction of a self-storage facility consisting of eight one-story and one three-story buildings on a 5.9 acre site located in MC, the MC Commercial District, under the Florida Town Government.
Hey. Good evening, Matt and Astro Associates, been before this board three or four times now for this project, so I'll really try to keep this as quickly, quick as possible and painless as possible. At the last meeting, we were asked to resubmit some new materials showing somebody, addressing some of the comments from Mary Mato, who was the group owner of Roosters. So after the meeting, we went out and spoke to Mary, and we were able to resolve everything, which I'm sure she can confirm, because Roosters is here tonight. And I can go through, I'll go through those items with you, some of the changes that were made on the site plan from the last meeting that really addressed those concerns. The first item is a formal easement over the roadway, the driveway, roadway, whatever you want to call it, into the development that allows Roosters to tie in any future development to tie in. The second being, we located the access driveway location for Roosters, and if any development is to happen to the west, so we spotted a location for that to occur, so that it's a four-way, everything's lined up. Beyond that, which you won't see on your plan, which you'll see on our final submission, we, the developer, agreed to pave Roosters curb cut, five foot under the property line, just so that it's more concrete as to where the location of that is. The other comment that had come up was in regards to a light pole in the corner. We showed that on the site plan, and we also have a note that is to remain. Another thing that had come up was how much are you removing of the area that we use for parking? So the developers agreed to remove only what he needs to construct the buildings and put the fence around, and then will allow Roosters to encroach it if they need to as much as we're able to. The last thing that the developer worked out with Roosters, Mary, was to do a, put together a cross-access easement for Roosters driveway, because the developer owns the parcel to the east of Roosters as well. And this is a really good benefit, because it limits any need for a curb cut if anything goes on in that parcel, and it also puts a formal agreement in place for Roosters and whatever does eventually happen in that parcel. It also gives a bet, helps with the development and improvement of that entrance as well. So there won't be a need for a curb cut when the parcel to the east is developed, because they can share the one that's on Roosters, which if you look at the plan, goes really right over the top of the property line, so it's somewhat encroached now, but we'll formalize an easement, so that it's no longer encroached in that, it's a legal agreement. I know there was some question about property lines and stuff like that, those were all verified, confirmed, it was more some question about some stray notes that we had on our plan removed, and we worked everything out with Mary. With that said, I'll open it up, oh, there was a few other things. One was Mr. Kishani had requested brick material on the front, which is difficult to see maybe, but it's there, and then also there was Mr. Anderson asked for some additional landscaping in front of building B. So we doubled up the green landscaping, it's a evergreen style material, or tree better, that will help block the facade of that, so there's twice as many trees there than there were before. So with that said, I'll open up to any questions, I think we've...
See, you got brick on it, you have, it doesn't show it on the legend, it shows you the driveway.
I'm sorry, where?
And in front of the building, you talked about the three stories, you don't put brick on that?
Yeah. It's, um...
There's nothing here saying that you're showing it.
Yeah, I guess it's, if you look close enough, you'll see...
Yeah, well, my eyes, I can see a couple little lights.
I know, it's typical.
But I don't see anything that says it's there.
Okay.
Your legend says it's something else.
Let's call it out as driveway, I think that's a, that's definitely a typo on our end, just, the legend didn't get updated, because if you look at the legend, the legend...
The other thing, let's go through this thing. Unless there's another drawing that you have, but preliminary approval, there are requirements. This doesn't mean it. There's no elevations in here or anything on the actual drawing. I mean, this, this looks like something you built in California or Las Vegas or whatever, you know, but this is what you're proposing, but...
Yeah, that's the elevation.
It's gotta be, yeah, but it's gotta be in your drawing sheet, you know what I mean? It's gotta, should be in a full set of drawings, like all your drawings have.
Yeah, usually we submit a separate elevation comment.
Unless we've got one.
That's...
If we got one, have you got one, Josh? Maybe, maybe do a separate drawing.
I think the time that we've ever made a submission, and I don't know if things are different now, but we submitted our civil plans, and then typically architectural plans or elevation plans are separate, so we submit elevations separately, not actually within our civil engineering plans, because it doesn't really, it doesn't really include civil engineering. So that's how we've done it in the past, I don't know if... Yeah.
I was, I was gonna, yes, that drives, preliminary file drive, preliminary file, pretty much the same thing. See, you've got it, Josh, you've got it, I don't know if...
No, I've got the same thing that you got.
Same thing I got?
Yeah.
So there's no set of drawings that you can sign? Exactly, so there's, there's no elevations in the building, it would be on that sheet? Isn't that normally what you get on a draw, on a plan?
I've seen it done both ways.
I mean, we go file this, you go sign, you go sign for final approval, and you go sign your MyLARs or anything else. This would have to be attached with it or something?
We can certainly attach it, yeah, that's something.
I think, see, that's not...
The thing is with MyLAR is, is this, MyLAR is not going to put this in color and that pretty, that's the only thing. Like I said, we typically, we do separate civil engineering plans and separate building plans, and the building plans usually come along with elevations. But that's how we've done it in the past, and if I'm, we'll make sure that it's included as part of, as part of the submission or final signature.
I think you should, I think you should have your elevations, your drawing elevations showing, whatever you're proposing to use, if you've got metal on the other side, drive it, whatever, whatever's there showing it spelled out. So again, we're going along with something, we're looking at this, it says drive it, so...
Yeah, so this, this shows the metal on the back?
Yeah.
And it shows this, it's difficult to see the brick, but it's there.
Yeah, I know, but it doesn't say it, it says drive it, it doesn't say drive it.
Okay.
So now if we prove it, we say, okay, well, then you come back and say, oh, no, you guys proved this.
Right.
It's gotta drive it, there it is, then what do we do? We've already been there, with some of the other things here, you know, so that's why I don't want to get into that room. The fencing, you got fencing going around, I'm still upset that we can't get this road connected somewhere, it's anywhere. Help me out again with Roosters, Roosters is going to go where now, will they just keep their exit going out?
Yes, they're gonna keep the exit going out to Ridge Road, because they need it for track and trail drop off, and they're also gonna tie in back here with us, and this driveway here that they have currently kind of straddles the property line, it'll also be access for the property to the east. So there won't be a need for a curb cut for the property to the east. The one that's currently there will go away.
Should, should they have some documentation for your lights that you're proposing and the buildings, you know, because that's something we require at other projects for, there's more, Fords Road, one up, and Ridge Road.
Yep. Yeah, I believe they're all, they're all shown.
There's something that was in the file, so this is the light.
Okay, so you want a touch sheet of the light?
Yes, something that's showing what it's looking like.
Sure.
So it isn't glaring out, I'm sure you know that. Anybody in, anyone who's here, sorry.
I'm seeing that there's a preliminary site plan approval with conditions. For the current subject.
For this, for this project, we haven't got the preliminary approval yet?
Well, no, for the subdivision taken over Roosters' plan, and also subdivision of the other thing, because minutes from April 23rd, 2015, say, in summary, is approved, provides preliminary site plan with conditions, they don't see then talk about final approval.
I don't know, that is a 25th.
Yeah, and even going back to minutes from back then, although supposed to have been conditioned for final approval, which right now it's appearing it's gonna be, it'll find out whatever it may be, but we're supposed to engage the DOT, talk about the access road to the, pin down the property, and it's also conditioned such that the building permits were issued for whatever development is going on, but Roosters driveway would be closed. That's actually one of the...
Project finishes for final approval?
First, maybe that's for preliminary approval. And right now, I don't have a form, any record of final approval for this project.
I'm Brian McKenna, I'm from St. Malbor, I can authorize and withdraw that application, because that, that was like the better, the project that that was done for never happened.
Okay, so Roosters subdivision never happened?
The project you're referring to, where we were developing, there's preemptive potential for development, where we're now doing the life storage?
Right.
That never materialized. So I wasn't involved, but...
Part of that whole process, preliminary approval.
That had the subdivision, what you see as the subdivision here was issued as a preliminary, I don't see minutes for that ever being issued as a final. And so the issue I see now is that we have the forest application, where someone can find the final approval. This has never been subdivided.
We did go through...
We mentioned subdivision.
Yeah, but I don't have the minutes, and we pulled the minutes for this project, and the only one that comes up is preliminary.
Oh, we went through a final subdivision approval, actually, I recall being Josh and...
Do you have a copy of the minutes?
I don't have it with me, but you can see the property boundary, that's what we did, it was...
So what we need to see is a copy of the final minutes?
It's, it is, what you see in the, in the plans that we've submitted includes the project boundary, the boundary, because we did the subdivision.
Right, I'm saying for the original subdivision.
You want a copy of the map?
There should have been a file of flat minutes that could have...
There definitely is, yes.
Have all the final approvals listed on it.
Sure.
Is there more flat or not?
It was definitely flat.
But look at the minutes. Like I said, right now, I'm looking at the minutes, and the last time this came up was in April of 2015, this is just preliminary.
I can provide, I'm not doing a hot map, that's not an issue.
It was just five... Those eight months ago, right?
Yeah.
Six months ago?
Six, eight months ago.
But then, but when was final approval given?
It wasn't, it didn't need it, because it was less than the threshold, it was three lots. But Roosters, Roosters was already subdivided out, so Roosters was not as part of the subdivision, it was, we subdivided these two lots out, these two here.
No, what I'm talking about, these are minutes that...
I, I may have clarification.
Sure.
Can you talk to your... My understanding is back when everything went through in 2015, that was based upon when the dentists had bought the front lot, and they had planned on taking the roadway all the way to Schucraft, but I guess there's wetlands or something back there, and the roadway can't go through there, so that was put in place back in 2015, if the roadway ever went to Schucraft.
Well, actually, the disapproval, I'm looking at too regarding for 2015, talks about that road being built, and there was a route that was to get it over to Schucraft, so it's not an issue that it can't be built, it's just that it was never built.
And that's what I know, if that road wasn't going in, then I don't lose the driveway,
but now I keep looking.
It talks about, I'm not understanding, it talks about discussion and putting in the access road, you know, at such time that the sort of square footage, this development has developed, and that's square footage of them, and that's a condition, issue of any kind of permits for any kind of development going on here, because your driveway goes away, and this driveway has to go in, and this was just preliminary approval.
Think you want your driveway to go away?
I'd rather keep my driveway.
So then we have to go back to the re-subdivision decision that was made back in 2015, find out if it was ever finalized.
But don't your approvals only last for a year?
Well, then your property's not subdivided, that's the problem.
Well, it was subdivided, then we purchased and what, we're out?
You have any record of anything in something?
The recent one, yes.
It's subdivided right now.
Yeah, these two.
And it's fine.
Right. I can't speak to what happened with Roosters site, you can just act that way.
Yeah, it's the one analogy of...
Because that came into play with the dentists...
Subdividing of the pros or a pro.
That came into play with the dentists...
Also, I can tell you, the team saying that the way to the west was, the way to the west was developed too.
Yeah, we, the developers...
This, this parcel over here?
To the west of...
Roosters?
Not to the west of Roosters, to the east.
He's talking...
Oh, I mean...
No, we don't know, no.
The wetway is...
The wetway is down here.
And parcel, right, that are, you know, it's a...
This parcel?
I don't know.
Because that's the parcel, it's supposed to have the road on it, and it was part of the overall subdivision, the overall concept for the site.
Yeah, see, those are the comments that were made way back then to agree through this, that the road had to go in, and...
Can we, can we just offer, can we kind of get this back?
No, turn, go forward.
Let's just, if we could just kind of look at where we are today, that was based on up to thirty-five, over thirty-five thousand feet of construction, this MOU apparently, which we're aware of, there's nothing to do with, aware of it. We've got eighty thousand feet, we generate ten cars of traffic a day, we could have built a thirty-four thousand nine hundred square foot medical office building out there with hundreds and hundreds of cars a day, and a road would not have been required, none of that would have mattered, because we would have been under thirty-five thousand feet. It was originally fifty, when Tony and I worked on it eleven years ago, somehow it got to thirty-five. So at thirty-four nine, we could have a parking lot on Ridge Road and not have to have to put that road in. We're down before you with a phenomenal project, we've got great cooperation with Roosters, it's a staple of this community, we've worked out a great situation for them, including allowing them to use our surplus land, we moved our fence closer to our buildings, so they could park on our land when the whole football team shows up after a big game. The parcel to the east is owned by our team, our developer, there's a current curb cut right there, right now, that services that acre, that's been subdivided. We're, you're not asking for a curb cut, we're working with Mary and Mr. Schneider to improve her curb cut she has now that she uses and needs, and we're gonna be conditioned by having to develop that one point two five acres, or whoever does, and they're not gonna get a curb cut, and the first thing you're gonna ask for is where's enough curb cut to my parcel, and we're gonna say you don't have one, why? Because as part of the overall master plan, it would make more sense for the town, the community, and circulation to cooperate with their neighbor, so when we develop that, we're gonna repave that, we're gonna make it all nice and nice, and then the parcel to the east is gonna have to go in that driveway to access their parcel, because they will not have a curb cut on Ridge Road, so we're actually eliminating the curb cut. So I'm just trying to bring it back to today, 2021, in hindsight, the developer made a mistake in 2015, I think they thought they had a project, in fact, I've got no idea, they preemptively came into the town and got out over their skis, the market turned, there was no demand, and we all know what happened the last five or six years, hence we got our variance from the zoning board, and I apologize that we've confused, because even for Matt and I, it's taken us several months to figure it out, so I apologize, but the reality is today, we have a much, much better project than we would have had five years ago, much less intensity, no demand in the school district, virtually no demand on fire, police, and ambulance, and we're gonna pay our taxes, and we're cooperating with their neighbor. So I'm just asking the board to please consider where we are today, we do have a subdivision filed, as you see it here today, the technicalities I won't speak to, it's beyond my pay grade, but I'm confident in Astro and Josh and the staff, that if there's a nuance or that we need to figure out, we've figured it out, but the 2015 project is not on the table today, this one, and it's a much better project, it's a much, much better project.
That was some of the questions even back then, going through the minutes, related to that, what happens if, and all the ifs did happen, and that's where we got literally plain English screwed out of the roadway. It's not able to happen now, so I guess we can just say goodbye to that part, deal with what we've got now, I'm not happy with it either, I mean, I think this is, somehow should have been handled differently back then.
But it's, it's really the ultimate fight. The current configuration, the Roosters parcel subdivided out, the Dowell parcel subdivided out, the current shape of this parcel, how did that happen since we didn't get final approval?
You've got a map, you said?
Yeah, I mean, we, to develop, to, when we subdivided these two pieces out, we had to get all the information here, and we had, I believe, all the information for this lot, so, so I'm very confident...
Yeah, I'm not interested in that, I'm interested in the original map, this file, to get those two parcels subdivided out of the truck. Also very curious about the parcel to the west of the self-storage areas, where the wetlands is, if that is an independent parcel or this is actually part of this?
No, this is owned by the senior facility, this parcel is owned, I believe, by the senior facility, it's not, this is our boundary. Talking about this parcel, this is owned by the...
Well, was Conifer acquired that and built the Fort of Senior community back there, it was one two-story building, they got a land for a second one, and I don't believe that ever got built, but Conifer was the original developer, and I don't know if he's still owning it, I would never know that, though. I think they have other, I think they have weed jobs in the building now, memory serving.
They do. It was a phase two.
Which they would use energy station to, they're trying to go that services Webster Bay of Hardeston right now, they would use that same access, so it would have no impact on Ridge Road, they wouldn't be able to use our new curb cut, is that exclusive to Roosters and our self-storage?
Can you just talk, can you just make sure you use your mic, thank you.
Sorry about that, so does Carlos go in place of Webster, they actually own the wetland here?
Correct.
All right, what it is, it is, I guess, there may be a final approval somewhere that we never got, never actually got recorded or filed, I don't know, but if you've got a map showing that it was filed, present that.
Yes, I can just go to the accounting tax maps, too, or just...
Why don't we do this, like, I want to suggest we just table this thing right now, and you can do, you know, move forward, do a preliminary file, we're just here for preliminary anyway, so if you move forward with preliminary file, we do that all the same way, if everything's working, I think the plans need to be completed, show some of these things we just mentioned.
Okay.
Maybe elevation is that, exactly, I mean, I'm looking at the drawings, these here, and I really don't know what the front of this is looking like from Ridge Road, you know what I mean?
Okay, so you want a perspective draw?
Yeah, regular, like...
This, this is an elevation, which is, which is what Tom requires.
And the elevations that go, that's pretty, it's colorful, it's nice.
Right.
But the ones that go with the set of drawings is the approval, for the approval.
That, this is what we typically submit.
Separate, geez, no.
Yes, it's...
And we've gotten stuff like that, but we get drawings showing the elevations in the sheets.
I mean, typically, they're not even, the ones that are in the actual plans that are either black colored, they're usually black and white.
I agree.
So, I mean, I can submit black and white ones, or these, but this is how we've always, this is how we've always handled it here, so...
Then somebody's gotta remember to staple this to this, to get it to call it a complete partnership, all be in one thing.
Well, what I'll, what I'll propose doing is just taking these elevation sheets that you guys have and including in the plans, it's a matter of thickening all of it.
But, yeah, show an elevation, what's this looking like from Ridge Road, basically, the front elevation, the north elevation, with the brickhead, and so on and so forth.
Can I just ask, can I just ask, technical question, Colin? So, the label, the elevations, listen, I look at it, and it says drive it, but it's drawn for, it's Mason ring, we're gonna do this, just like you asked for. So my question for the board is, that elevation is mirrored after an elevation that we think is appropriate for the use, and the color scheme from life storage is the operating. Other than labeling it brick, which it is...
No, that's all it's gotta have, but the label's...
It has it included in your total pack.
Says brick.
So you've got all four elevations, front, back, side.
Yeah, it just says brick, says drive it, says metal, whatever it's gonna be, but this way here, somebody goes and look at the drawing down the road, and it's saying something different, so it's changed the word, that's all, that's all I looked at, I can see Josh showed me, he says, it looks like they're putting brick on it today, we were talking about, and I'm looking at saying, yeah, it looks like brick, you know, it's a small brick with these, which is accepted, but it says drive it, that's all.
Yeah, it was, because it was drive it before, and I never got the vibes, so...
Not the color, it's definitely color brick, I mean, is it, is it gonna be, gonna look like drive it, or is it gonna be...
It's gonna look this color, because this is the color that, this kind of goes along with the color scheme of life in storage craft, so that, that's why we picked that color brick. It's an inner tone color.
No chance of changing that to something that's more pronounced from the road, because you're back, or something driving, you know? But, you know, something that shows some color, something that makes it look like a nice building, don't want it to look like the, you know, Adver or something, yeah?
I think it's gonna look pretty nice.
Well, yeah, I think it will.
That's a color theme that we're trying to bottle after, your brand, I mean, like U-Haul is orange and whatever, it's a lot more attractive than U-Haul.
Brian, you've been there, Brian, remember, they used to like the arches that Dowell's too? Yeah, but remember, like the arches, they can do things, and they don't have to be all...
So you'd like to see a darker red?
Yeah, I think so, maybe, is that what you're referring to? I would agree with that.
Brick that looks like brick.
You guys, who is it? Something, something that shows, take a look at the front, from the road that way, it doesn't look like nothing, huh? Think about it, all right?
Is this the same color that they're adding on the road?
So they have the same going in the building, or off the road, two fifteen? They're in, they're in, but they've got new ground up construction, they've got a couple of different themes, but the color scheme is, the template, if you will, they ask us to... And maybe you can see this as a point, too, but that's, that depends on what Mr. Jay Reckle, I guess, does with his... That depends on what Mr. Jay record, I guess, was with his block there in the front.
Yeah, I think about it, whatever. If there's a reason you can't do it, well, just explain it. I'd like to see it. Like Dave said, though, a darkened color, it'd show up a lot, a lot better, I think. All right, what else? What's that? Yeah, I don't know.
Do you weigh the cabinet though? Being subdivided because it was lost to a certain owner?
Well, when we subdivided these two lots out here recently, we did not need more approval. I'm pretty confident we didn't come for...
They added the line, making it one and two?
Yes. We did not come for any more approval. Because it was only a two-lot subdivision.
But do you remember when...
When all the... I'd gone out. It was well before my time at Pascoe, so I have no idea. I know that it was done because we had made all that information to create the subdivision map. So I know that it was... That is correctly... Those are the correct property lines. I just don't know why it was filed. I don't have... I can look in the research, do you?
Well, can I guess what I'm thinking? It was a parcel or something. And that's subdivided out. Do you remember the old Roman development?
Yeah, I don't know what the acreage was. It was cast or spink, I think. Back of the theater.
Well, no, I kept talking back when this first came in. And we did the initial review and all that.
I don't recall the script and the layout.
Kind of bits and pieces have been carved out over time and...
Well, that's what killed it.
Yeah.
That's what killed the whole program. Some pieces of it were sold off. And once it was sold off, then there's no way of accessing those records. That's what we've got.
And it appears too that even the final wasn't given.
Yeah, as far as I know, I can't...
It's not... It falls under that same thing of what was lost and what are the four permits? Subdivided out anyway. And so it lined up with a lot lot configuration here. So what you're saying, actually, as the advocate, that this is not a continuation of any previous product or something. This is standalone, independent property. However, the rest of the thing was approved with that kind of later development. And that's... Is that accurate for how it sounds like it's going on? This is standalone property that you've ever purchased? Does anyone have any business relationship with previous owner?
Previous owner is the same owner now.
Is it? Yes. I've got a question for the board. Can this be considered effectively new adaptation? Or is this really...
Well, I think if...
Seems that we're final on any...
Yeah, that's... We're seeing that as a... As a reasonable motion for no...
Right.
No minutes for a final approval, but... I wonder if you've got a drawing showing that whatever you filed...
Yeah, I will see what I find.
That's the thing to dig up and say, "Here, yours. You couldn't have gotten that. It must have got a final approval."
It's more than a...
Yeah, I'll see what I can dig up. I'm sure there's something that County Court talked about.
All right. And guess what? What goes into play, who we want to find out?
What's that?
We have to find out too, really. The validity of understanding is right in the... If it's approved, we're going to hold on.
The memory and the understanding's never...
That was never filed.
It was never filed. Nor were any of the potential easements either.
See, that's it. And all of that stuff somehow slipped through the door and...
It's too bad, because it's like 10 pages of single-spaced deliberations that are a giant waste of time.
That's why we want to get some fresh reading from the beginning.
Here you go. This is for our subdivision plan and file. The map page and sign-off paper.
Okay.
Want to dig that in?
Uh, no, I want this so that I can...
What have you got?
She's got the live on the page of when it was subdivided.
The subdivision was filed June 26, 2015. Libra 350 MAX, page 47. All sign-offs occurred in June 2015.
Just re-repeating.
This is the subdivision for a piece of the rock, which is Brewsters. The subdivision was filed June 26, 2015. Libra 350 MAX, page 47. All sign-offs occurred in June 2015.
And that was two months after the preliminary approval, then? Is somewhere... It may have just not gotten posted. That's all I can think of. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, just to recap. So Mr. Kashani, you're looking for... Well, I'll update the elevations we're putting in the plans.
Yes.
Sure. And was there anything else?
Well, you... Your lights, which are...
The lights, yep.
She needed the lights. Your fence, you had a fence, but...
Uh, it might be aluminum picket fence, right? The fence that's going around. Black and white.
Yeah, I think it's like, you know, like plastic, like poly-plastic permanent fence. Now that you see, I think it's black.
So it's a neat clean...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so it's not part of it?
No, no, no. Part of it.
Yeah, okay. All right. But show that, show a piece of, you know...
Yep.
What you're showing, what you're going to do.
Yep.
Yeah, that way we've got everything. That goes in the file, tell me more something.
Who cares if the light bulbs getting updated from Brewsters? If that's getting updated, should that match? The light bulb on the Brewsters property, should that match the rest of the light bulbs? Can I have that on?
It matches all the other poles on my property.
It's old, not as old, one or three of them, yeah.
Mary had just mentioned, just for the record, that it matched the pole that is on the corner of the property matches all her light bulbs on her property.
Okay. And then wherever the lights are going out in the building, just down the...
Yep.
Yes, down.
Yes.
All right, so you want to table this then to what?
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah. Next date. And then also, we would be able to get preliminary and final at that next meeting as well.
I'm sorry?
We can get preliminary and final at the next meeting provided...
If everything is over, yeah. And I think that's the goal.
Yes.
You can't get the preliminary today. If everything is in order with this stuff, we've got that additional paperwork and stuff that should be made for it. Okay, so your stuff has to be moved by people there.
I know last time we were here was seven days prior. Seven days prior to the meeting. So May 4th meeting?
So May 4th. It's the next meeting. Motion to table it? Make a motion. I'll make a motion to table the... One of the storage facilities, but our May 4th meeting. Give me a second.
Second.
All favor?
Fine.
All right. Thank you.
Coastal View subdivision section five located in Western and the Coastal View Drive. After late May, LLC requests a subdivision site and approval associated with the subdivision of lands and construction of nine single-family residence by a 346-acre condo located in WD waterfront town district under a code of town of West.
My name is Mike Ritchie from Costage Engineering. Here representing Stacy Harold, a lady of Lake Land, LLC, for requesting final section subdivision approval for section five Coastal View subdivision. Just a little overview on this. The preliminary plan was approved in 2002. This is the last section of the subdivision. And under the preliminary plan, it was actually proposed to 35 townhouse units. Based on the market, it has been determined that single-family residential makes more sense. So at this point, the plan that you have is for nine single-family lots. In terms of utilities, water, sewer, stormwater are all available or previously designed under preliminary approval. We had previously met with Mr. Kashani and Mr. Artuso to go over the project. I think generally, it was well received at that time. We did receive late last week some PRC comments. Generally, I spoke with the developer, and he's agreeable to all the comments. I think we can address these. I'd be happy to go down through each one of them if the board wishes to have more detail on it. But with that, I would open any questions the board have.
When we looked at it, it looked pretty simple. That's got... Before even you develop, I know there is a couple of... There are a couple of spots on the waterfront side, on the bay, that are seriously washing out.
And I did see on the grading plan, there's a couple, I would say, existing gullies. And I talked to Josh about that. And our plan, obviously, we're not proposing any development within the DCC buffer area. But we would propose to add some drainage inlets, capture that water, and thereby significantly reduce the amount of stormwater runoff reaching the bluff.
There's an area, I believe, in the center, it's kind of wet area too. Like where the roadway would go back?
Yeah, and generally, that area is going to be infilled to make sure we eliminate any wet area. The sub will lift it up generally, you know, a foot over existing grade to avoid any wet area.
The lots, the way you're proposing this now is... I've got two different maps I'm looking at here. One is showing what was originally, I don't know, HOA? Or if it was just the open space area? The hashed area along the shoreline?
Yes.
Around the project?
Right. So I can speak to that a little bit. Originally, under the preliminary plan, there was a certain amount of open space that needed to be provided. And the original thinking was to make that open space along the bluff because obviously you can't develop in that area. A few things have caused us to kind of revise that thinking. One being this area, the lots and the property line is a little bit squatter. The grades really drop off to the south. You really can't move this road any further south. So these lots are very compact. So if we had to add in the HOA land and then to set back, there really wouldn't be any developable area really for adequate lots there. And another part of it is, you know, based on the 2017, 2019 high-water events, we felt it was important to give the homeowners the ability to be able to manage their properties instead of having to go through an HOA, which can be a little bit cumbersome. So for those reasons, we decided to relocate some of the open space, which you can see kind of in the hashed area here. Still complies with the amount of open space that was required for the preliminary plan. These areas, you can see some of this in the area of the existing pond and wooden areas that won't be disturbed in the future.
Anyway, any questions?
Can we go to the... What's your... Those items that...
You can... You can... I'm sorry.
Yeah. I'd be happy to run through these. First one, a couple of comments from the highway department. Says need a true T-style hammerhead for the turnaround at the coastal view. On the plan, we had proposed, I guess I would call it, a half hammerhead with the entrance going to the south. The reason for this is, you know, we didn't want to have to push that road any farther west than we needed to. And if we get a true T-style hammerhead, it would be impeding on this most western lot. I spoke with Josh about that. We're proposing to kind of bend the road a little bit to be able to get a true T-style hammerhead, but also not impede on the future lot. So I think we found a way to make that work. Thank you. And then the other highway department comment, on the last lot drive, we should remain on the east side so that's to be incorporated into the turnaround due to storm removal needs. We agree with that. It's good design. Another comment from Tony. The near washouts over the bank shoreline, the existing water should need to be addressed. And Mr. Kashani, you brought that up. And we're in agreement. Even with our plan as presented, we've significantly reduced the amount of stormwater runoff going to that bluff versus what goes there today. But we'll take another step and add a couple drainage inlets to further reduce what can get to the bluff. And then there's a few comments from the sewer department. First one, existing forest main coming from the cottages. Why are they tying into manhole S11 rather than turn around at S12? We agree. I think our thought was not to kind of backtrack where the pump station was but to continue on, but it's a shorter distance. So we're agreeable to tie into manhole S12. Next comment. They're basically asking that we tie to that manhole S12 with an inside drop, or with no inside drop, an outside drop, that is. And we're agreeable to that. And finally, the existing two-by-two sanitary vault. We don't know what that is for. It's that their pump station, it is shown on the map forty feet to the east of S12. They need to explain it. That's, again, that's a pump station for the cottages. There's a series of them going up the hill. There have been, even going back to section four, they've had to cut that forest main and tie in. So this would be the final one. And that existing vault is right around 507, 508. So we're agreeable to address all these comments. And I think we can do that relatively easily. Thank you.
Is this still now still part of... What's the... Paper on that here is Lake Land, LLC?
Correct.
It's... You guys, is it shaved out? LLC, it's Lake Land, LLC?
It's the actual, the land is the Haguenor Land Family Trust. So this whole thing going down the lake road is currently all one parcel. So the goal is we would subdivide these lots out and the remainder of the land would stay Haguenor family.
So you're the developer, though?
For the Haguenor, I found soon.
All right. Again, this is a public hearing, so I guess there's a bunch of folks here. If you would like to come up and... So just give us a little talk.
Sure, that's right.
Just give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Steve Cerragino. My address is 361 Coastal View Drive. I'm here both as a resident of the community and as a representative. I'm president of the homeowners association. So we just received notice of this development of the... So, you know, we compiled our questions. First and foremost, you know, we're happy that nine homes are going in as opposed to 34 townhomes. But in looking at the design, we had a few questions. And maybe the gentleman from Costage, Stacy, or those here, the Haguenor family, will be able to answer. Now, the first is, you know, the open space. There's supposed to be... Again, I think the board is aware that Coastal View subdivision's been around for around 19 years. board is aware that coastal view subdivision's been around for around nineteen years. Hopefully, the development will finally finish in the next year or so with some remaining homes. This is phase five. It was supposed to be part of the homeowners association and it appears as though at this point, it's not going to be. So we have six, seven, eight hundred million dollar homes in, in our, in our community. Phase five is opening up with nine lots that is not going to be part of an HOA. So first and foremost, we don't know what, what type of homes are going in. So we want to address the fact that we're concerned. We want to maintain the value of our property. When I bought it to coastal view, I bought with the, with the intent that we're part of an HOA. The homes around me were going to be part of this HOA. They were going to be in compliance with what the homes are supposed to look like, size, values, so on and so forth. I trust the lakefront homes will be of, of proper size and value to maintain that. But with respect to the open space, there's supposed to be 6.8 acres that when I bought the property and, you know, the residents bought the property, relied on the CPS seven that that was going to be there. Where, you know, I, I got, again, we got these maps about a week ago, even last very long time to look at it. Where is the 6.8 acres in this plan that the homeowners will have access to?
The hashed area shown in that plan is the 6.8?
Go ahead and finish, because I want you to know those questions.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, that's fine. So what, if, whereabouts is that? Just point to that.
Yes.
Okay. And we didn't have, again, we didn't have a lot of time to look at this. Who, and again, who's going to own that and maintain it? Because the common areas within coastal view right now, the homeowners association owns it. We maintain it, we subcontract it. It's mowed, it's mowed, it's gorgeous space over. Who's going to maintain that property? Who's going to own that property?
Okay, go ahead. Keep, just take your notes and then you can address it after.
And is there going to be a plan for a path?
No, sorry, a path?
A path to the lake. You know, our, our community worked and were assessed to get, to have a path down to the lake. We were granted that by, by this board, by the DEC and a number of other agencies. It was incredibly difficult, but, you know, is there a plan to have for this phase of the, of the subdivision? Again, with this common area, you know, when you go into this part of the subdivision, when it's complete, they'll enter into coastal view, which is all HOA land that can be maintained, to manicure, to perfect it. Are these folks going to enjoy it to some extent? Sure. Are they going to contribute to the upkeep of our common areas that they're going to have access to? Right now, it's a plan that they're, they're not going to do that. And part of this too is, you know, from a budgetary standpoint, when we, HOAs put together, we were relying on revenue coming in from these additional homes, they're really townhomes, you know, both getting lot the nine houses, we don't want thirty-four homes. But right now, there's no planned contributions from these nine homes. Not only for the common areas, but they're probably, they're going to have access to the path that everybody was assessed for and paid for at the lake. And no one's going to stand guard and go, hey, you live on phase five, you don't, you don't have access to the lake. So that, that's a, that's an issue too. The other question is, what, and I think you may have mentioned it, what's going to be the setback from the shoreline to where the back of the homes are? Because everybody's aware of the erosion issues. And it would be a shame for these, you know, folks buying these lots to be too close to the back lot. And then, and then on the other side of that question is, how far are these homes from the, the street? Because we want to maintain the consistency and the beauty of the neighborhood. So we, we don't want houses thirty feet from the street, but most of our houses, the, I don't know what the setback was, was fifty-five or sixty feet from the, from the front of the street. So we want to at least have a consistent view when you're coming down coastal view all the way to the end, not have six or eight houses on the end that are sitting right on top of the street. And I, and I really know a funny point, it's going to buy, I'm sure they will buy a house and want it sitting that close to the street, especially homes of that value. The other, the other concern is too, about two years ago, the HOA came to this board and we requested ownership of our, our property, the bluff, because we wanted, due to erosion, we wanted to have the opportunity to, you know, improve it, protect it. And right now, we don't have that opportunity. With this phase five going in, it appears as though, you know, the folks buying these lots will have the ability to own the bluff and, and essentially they could have, like access if they applied for it, if granted. So the request really would be is, they have that same right to do that. Our, our homeowners on our street suffered great damage over the last few years with the erosion issue, want that same ability to do that. You know, there's been residents that have spent thirty, forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars on our street to protect their shoreline, they don't even own it. So we would, we would at least request that, the ability to own that shoreline. I think it's only fair that if I'm going to invest sixty or seventy thousand dollars to put stones in the back of my pot, that I restown it. And then finally, again, I think I mentioned it, and lastly, is the architectural standards. When I bought our home, Stacy did a great job and, but there were standards. You know, Steve, we had to put a few thousand square foot home and it has to look like this, the roof has to be this color, has to conform. So we have a real conforming neighborhood, that the houses are of consistent character. Sure, we've driven down the street, it's a gorgeous street. And we just want to make sure we maintain the character of the street and, you know, some obscure architectural homes aren't going up, you know, on the other end. I mean, people bought, I bought into that subdivision because of the, the rules and regulations. I'm, you know, CPA trained, that's why I like rules and regulations as many other people do. And I, and, you know, we pay a lot of taxes and we pay a lot for our house, so I just want to make sure that those standards are maintained throughout, you know, throughout the neighborhood. And, you know, finally, we only, we only had a week to look at this. And again, we support it, but I, you know, this is basically the questions that came from the board. We haven't had a chance to go to the community to see if there was any other issues. But again, just to reiterate, we support the, the nine homes going in, I think Stacy did a good job, but these other concerns, you know, we'd like at least have it addressed prior to, you know, prior to hitting this. That's all you have, so we're good. Thank you.
Two questions, second. You want to go ahead and adjust the board?
Yeah, sure. I may have missed some of these or may have them out of order, sorry. First one I have on there, who will own the, or who's going to own the open space that's not going to be an HOA? That property is currently owned by the Haggadorn family, so it'll continue to be owned by them and maintained by them as it currently is for now. Is there a plan for a path? The answer is yes, we do have a path planned at the very western edge, which is going to tie into the cottages area, which again, all part of the Haggadorn property. So there'll be easement over that to allow access to get down to that area. We're not proposing any tree clearing, any grating, even really, even any stone, really it's just going to be a footpath to get down and enjoy the water. Setbacks front and back, so the, the rear setbacks and, excuse me.
Fifty feet.
Yep, sorry about that. Setbacks, the, the rear setback is fifty-five feet from the, the property lines, but there is also a twenty-five foot buffer from the top of the bluff. And as you can see on the plan, the, the rear setbacks are exceeded. Our goal really was to stay as far away from that bluff as we could. The front setbacks are a little bit shorter than they are in other areas, they're consistent with what was approved in the patio home section, and those are thirty feet. And really, we, we didn't see it was much of an issue, there's one opposing driveway, so you really don't have the issue of, you know, kind of opposing driveways and having pinch points there. So, so that's what we have proposed for setbacks. Architectural standards, I can't speak to them as well as Stacy can, but I know it's in his best interest to have as nice a home go in there as possible. Stacy, you can speak to that if you'd like. I, I think the very, it's the intent that the highest standards will be maintained. I believe that's it, in HOA lands, people drive through these areas that, you said, you know, they're not in the pain of the HOA, but they're going to benefit from it. I guess my argument would be that it's a dedicated road, that really it's, it's the who pays taxes and that area will be maintained by the town, not the HOA. So I guess that's my response to that.
Can I have a model to that?
I guess my question would be, why wouldn't this be part of the HOA along with the rest of the project?
I, I think Stacy could answer that better. I, I think it's easier to keep it out of an HOA because it's just, I mean, I, I don't want it to speak, but I would say less of your argument, less, less open.
The gentleman you're saying, it makes sense to me though. If the whole subdivision, coastal view was in the homeowners association and you're just adding it into, adding it into the tail end of it with nine more houses, it would seem to me that that should be part of the original subdivision.
Well, we're proposing to maintain as open space, but not necessarily to be managed by a homeowners association. I understand what, what the homeowner's saying, that the EPLs should be paying in, but I don't really think that there's, you know, by paying in for an HOA, there's not a lot of benefit that they're getting from it. I understand there's certain standards that would be maintained.
So are they getting screwed, these people that have a homeowners association?
I, I, I can't say that. I wasn't around to get an approval, but I get your point. And Stacy, I don't know if you would like to address that.
Personally, I'd rather see it all under the owners, so that's my thinking though.
I don't disagree. It's not my call at this point. It's kind of a family call. We reviewed it, so we're looking for feedback now, working over with them and see what they want to do.
All right. Well, let's go with, let's go with that. Was there someone else wanting to speak?
Yeah, if I could just comment on some of these comments. With respect to the map he's pointing to, again, obviously he's the expert, however, when he talks about the, the rear property lines, you're talking about lines that are going to the lake, okay? So when you look at the rear...
When you look at the rear here that he's referring to, and I could be wrong, this is, this is the back, this is the lower side of the bluff.
It's eroding, okay? So I don't, I don't know what they're, what they're saying, the setback is from this back property line. If it's from the back property line where the lake is, half of that property is in Lake Ontario. So if that fifty-five feet is tied along from the back of the house to the back of the property line, if that's what they're...
But I think the number, I think the number you mentioned was fifty-five from the bluff, right?
Twenty-five, fifty-five feet from high water, twenty-five from the bluff.
Yeah, fifty-five feet from high water, it's not land, yes. So that, that, these houses are sitting a lot closer to what this is depicting in this, in this plan. Further, these houses are, are sitting way closer than our, our houses are sitting right now. And they could easily, with this road out, and have a greater front side than that. There's plenty of land here. And as far as the HOA goes, yes, we are getting screwed, okay? I, I would suggest and ask that they be part of this HOA. They're coming into this, you know, there's eighty or ninety homes that are already in the subdivision. And, and the land is maintained and we do pay to have that land mowed, mowed.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the question board, don't just...
Okay, I was, I was addressing his question with respect to, you know, his, you know, response with the HOA. But they should be, I would, I would respect him to ask, you know, this board to require these homes to be part of the HOA. It would allow us to maintain the architectural standards, it would pay into the, the community, it would pay into the common area. It's nine homes, okay? These are going to be seven hundred and fifty million dollar homes. I think they got four hundred dollars a month paid for the, for the common areas. It's not a big deal, but it is fun.
All right, let me, I have one more question I want to ask now. The way is, the way you guys are drawing showing here, what's, what is the dimension from the road, thirty, thirty-four, is that?
Thirty feet from the right way, correct.
From the right way. And then a house, but on here, it looks like there's considerable depth.
Correct, correct, yeah. The, the closest house to the bluff setback, closest house to the bluff is seventy feet. So seventy feet from the, the bluff setback, that's not to the property line, that's not to, you know, water's edge, that's, that's seventy feet.
The bluff.
From the back of the house to the bluff setback, not even the bluff. So there's, and that, that was our goal the whole time, that's why...
So, so flat land, how far are you away from that?
Flat land, how far are we disturbing?
Back, back of the house to the actual drop.
Uh, I mean, we're, we're maintaining thirty, forty feet from, from the bluff at the closest point of, of disturbance, and that's just tying graves in.
So the house would be thirty to forty?
No, the, the house would be about seventy feet from, from the bluff, but the, the closest, the, any earthwork or disturbance is going to get is about forty feet from the bluff. And that was our intent, to minimize the work near the bluff.
Okay, I see what you're saying now. All right, was there someone else who's...
Yes.
Just give us your name and address.
Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Jacqueline Lito. I live at three each, three Coastal View Drive. I'm a resident of Coastal View and a member of the HOA governing Coastal View. Mr. Kashani, after a brief moment, you said, are the existing homeowners getting screwed? That was your first question to this group after just a few minutes of listening to this proposal. And the answer that was given by our HOA president and the answer given to you by a resident, absolutely yes, we are trying to get, they are trying to screw us tonight. Not only are they trying to screw us tonight, but they didn't even give us the courtesy of informing us of their proposal. We had to learn of it through the notification through the town, which is quite deceptive and the town, this planning board should take note of the fact that they didn't bother to talk to any of the other residents. And we can't even speak for the other residents because we haven't even had the opportunity to talk to them about what the proposal is. So at a minimum, I'm going to ask the planning board, table this proposal so that they can do their due diligence and come back to the board. But I do have a couple of other things to mention. One of the threshold issues, and I'm not sure what the answer is, but I heard a couple of different things tonight. According to the CPS seven, Lake Lanning LLC is the entity that has, is the owner and the developer that can come before this board. I've heard Haggadorn Family Trust, I've heard Haggadorn Family Partnership. I don't know who owns what, I don't know what the plan is moving for, but the CPS seven requires Lake Lanning LLC. That's the applicant that can come before you tonight to request a change to the Coastal View subdivision plan, which was approved seventeen years ago. Now, if you might recall, Mr. Kashani, in September of 2018, members of the Coastal View community in this town, that pay a lot of money in taxes for this town, came to this board and said, we need to own the bluff. And the reason we need to own the bluff is because of the flooding that's occurring in our community and in our property. And, and this board was not supportive of that. And so our proposal in September of 2019 damaged and hurt our homeowners in that neighborhood. And we have individual homeowners who had to incur upwards of fifty thousand dollars to pay to protect that bluff that they don't own. Because who owns it? The HOA owns it. Do you know why the HOA owns it? Because that original subdivision plan, of which these people are members. Section five, our members of that original subdivision plan, required all of the bluff areas to be open space protected. That was the entwining, that's what we were told back in September of 2018. And we made the argument to this board, we need to change that because we need to just be able to protect our property. This board wouldn't do that. Now, within seven days' notice, you have the same subdivision people coming before you and saying to you, oh, this is a great plan, we're not going to put in condos. You know what? I don't want condos. I certainly support nine homes versus condos, but oh, and by the way, our nine homeowners that will have the same street address as me and own the bluff and protect their property, but I'm not allowed to do that. It's inequitable, it's unjust, it's applying different laws to different people that are appearing before you, it's despair, it's despair treatment, and quite frankly, I think it would be unlawful to even rule on the application tonight. And in addition, they're asking to, to subdivide that plan and again, without giving us full notice, also in the, in the proposed subdivision, there's some discussion about open space and maybe converting it to parkland or town property. I don't understand all of that because I haven't had time to look at it. I'm raising three kids, I have a full-time job, I don't appreciate the short notice to try to understand the impact on my property. But I certainly don't want town land or the public, they don't want to pay to, to, our board president works really hard to make our neighborhood look good. They don't want to pay for that, and then they also want to like donate some of the land to the town so I can have more people from the public coming through our community, but I have to pay for the nice signage and everyone else gets to enjoy it? That just doesn't make any sense to me. So I don't understand the whole particulars because I haven't had time, but I, I'm asking you that it's another reason to table their proposal, because they just haven't done the work. I don't know... I don't know, I don't even know if it's appropriate for a section of a subdivision plan that was approved to come before this board without even going through the full subdivision ahead of time. I haven't had time to look at it. Apparently, we'll take the time to look at it, but it doesn't seem appropriate to me that they can try to carve themselves out and not let anybody else know what's going on. And not only are they carving themselves out, but as you've said, they don't even want to be part of the HOA. So you guys did all the hard work for 17 years. You've made all these improvements. You fought the fight for the lakefront. And you know what? We're just going to sneak this application in. We're going to try to backdoor before the planning board and get it approved so we can sell our million-dollar lots to who? I don't even know who, because I don't know who the developer, don't know where the builder is, have no idea what the lot's going to look like. All of that is just unknown, remains unknown. As you know, from the last time that we were here, the shoreline erosion is significant. And I'm not here to even suggest that I oppose the shoreline ownership or the bluff ownership because I think in 2018, this planning board got it wrong back then. The homeowners should be allowed to purchase and own their bluff to protect their property. It's ridiculous that we are not even to do that. But what's more ridiculous is that I can have a Coastal View address where I can't do that, and yet someone down the street can. There's no way that that can happen. It's unlawful. And we will take every step we can to fight that. I do want to remind the board again that everyone purchased the subdivision in reliance upon that CPS 7, that original Coastal View subdivision plan, which included Section 5, which is here tonight. And everybody in the light on that plan, when we purchased our property and we purchased our homes, I'd like to give the opportunity for the rest of the neighbors to consider this application, figure out what their issues are. They may have different issues than what I have. But I really don't like the backdoor, quick-handed, deceptive approach of putting this through to the planning board when the rest of the subdivision was never given notice of this application and our interests were not considered. So for that reason again, Mr. Kishani from the board, I respectfully request we table this application until such time as they at least engage in discussions with the rest of the homeowners in the subdivision to talk about how this would impact Coastal View, the street they're going to turn into and drive past every time they build their houses. And that this board should not take any action because clearly, if you did take action, it would result in despair treatment between the HOA that was before you in 2018 and the current application, and that would be a law. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. I'm a little concerned. She's got some good, strong points today. My understanding, I'm looking at the application, and the application does say Lake Landing LLC, but then Texaco's Hegerdor Family Partnership owns the parcel. So I'm guessing that's why it's a separate piece, developed separately. But I believe, Jacqueline, was it?
Yes.
It just, yeah, it's just there. Yeah, she has some strong points there. And I firmly, personally, I believe it should be part of a homeowners association without a doubt.
No question.
All right, you too, Dave?
No question. They should not be able to benefit from that HOA and enjoy all those benefits and not contribute absolutely best.
What, do you want this here and everybody else?
Yeah, just a couple more questions that I don't understand. I'm guessing it's, am I right in saying that this parcel is not connected to the original piece?
It was, yes.
It was?
I'll leave the lots unsubdivided out. This is the remaining land of the original.
But it's a different ownership.
I can't speak to it. I mean, it's...
That's what I'm seeing. It's a different ownership then. So if it's a different ownership, we're coming up with a new game. Which in that sense, really, should be starting as a sketch plan if you're an urban owner, my opinion.
I think it's the same, same people that are involved with the project start to finish. I mean, it was previous to Hegerdor property, but Lake Landing LLC and Stacy, he's been involved with the project from start to finish. This is regardless of who owns it now, it's part of the overall preliminary.
Well, now, if it's part of it, then let's use that word, part of it. Let's make it part of it and make it part of a homeowners association also, partaking with the costs and expenses of the whole project. That's my opinion. I don't...
Yeah, that was one of the problems I had when I was looking at this.
Yeah.
And the nice map you have, although it has green space on it. I mean, with the way the subdivision is, it looks like it's an outside subdivision. And it's not clear who actually owns the open space that you have or who maintains it.
Correct.
The law points to Jacqueline. Another thing I'm wondering about, I'm looking at the site data down here. Single family, it's got a lot areas and setbacks. And noticing the code, the setbacks, one thing that's really defined is 25 feet inland from the high water. And the drawing doesn't have a high water, it has a low water.
I think it's got mean and water, I think it's...
I see an actual property line, mean low water. I'm not seeing the high water. I see something that was surveyed out of the bay that was on this spot. Because firstly, I look at this, I see this lot line that's out here, and that's on the bar. And I'm not even sure how that lot line was surveyed or established. Because it looks like it's a reference to the low water.
Yes.
And once again, it's supposed to be like the high water.
Right in the middle, this, 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 as you know, actual property line is mean low water.
Yeah.
Right there.
What it's supposed to represent is the high water.
Yeah.
It's a reference to the walk, the walk with water.
I'll check the survey. I don't know if it'll say to occur in the mean and water.
In the same, that all the setbacks you have on here, these are things that are established by the planning board.
I'm sorry, can you state that again?
I have the site data.
Yes, yep.
Yes, 100. And a single family, I'm not sure where you got the numbers from. There's a lot of things. It's 25 feet from the high water, but the rest of it, when you look at the top of it, it says, as established by the town planning board. So I'm not sure where those numbers came from.
They're all from the preliminary plan. This development originally had a mix of different setbacks and different uses. So this is all per the preliminary plan in 2002.
So there's other parcels of this development that have the same plan.
So what you got is this a new, I'm confused if this is a new...
I would say that this is a less intense, less intense proposal from what was originally proposed. In this area, 34 townhouses were proposed. The road is the same spot and...
I don't have the original drawing.
Right. I can provide you. The preliminary plan, in this exact area, 34 townhouses were proposed. Now we're nine single-family lots. So we're much less intense than what was proposed, or was approved at preliminary degree.
But it looks like though, it looks like when you look at the drawing, where the townhouses were, the road came straight in, and the units considerably, the road was further to the south. So it looks like there was a lot more room in here.
And as part of resubs and redesigns that were approved by this board over time, this road has moved over time. So that's the current location of where it is now. And realistically, these grades farther south, they really drop off, like in banquet slopes. So the location of the road as we have it shown is, you know, as far south as we easily can put it. We put a lot of thought and effort into how that...
How come the other map shows it more to the south than we have the townhouses?
Well, it wasn't more to the south. It's deceiving because if you look at the preliminary plan, this line was straight through.
Well, I'm looking at, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the cut.
If you see here, see this, the reverse curve showing the road here. There's actually another reverse curve that brings the road back up. So there is a dive the road took, and that was a part of some re-subdivisions that occurred in previous sections. So if you take a straight projection of where this road is shown and go direct to east, it would be a straight line. But because of the resubs that occurred, you get basically the dip that occurs in the road. And with this, we're getting back on the original alignment. Sorry, I keep forgetting my...
All right, this one's up there.
Mr. Kishani, can I add one more thing that I forgot to discuss, please?
No, shoot.
Thank you. Members of the planning board, thank you for the opportunity to let me speak again. Jacqueline Toledo, we at 380 Coastal View Drive. When we came before the board in September of 2018, one of the things the board talked about was whether or not we needed to obtain a full environmental impact statement for the block because they were concerned about the block, as we all are concerned about the block with respect to the high water. So we're asking that the town require a full environmental impact statement for this proposal as well, but that that full environmental impact statement include the entire Coastal View subdivision because whatever they do on their property is certainly going to impact their neighbors and the rest of the subdivision. And again, the subdivision was approved as a whole. They shouldn't be able to piecemeal it and just do a full environmental impact statement for just their nine houses. It should be done for the entire neighborhood so that we all can see that impact statement. Thank you.
Could I respond to that? Seeker was done on this property here at preliminary approval and approved back in 2002. It's, we are doing Seeker for this section, and we feel that it's wholly unnecessary to do, consider existing lots and any sort of environmental impact statement. As we're really not impacting any of the existing residents in terms of development, whether or not the HOA or not, we're not developing, we're not impacting any of their properties by this development.
I keep going back to this other drawing here.
Are you referring to the preliminary plan? Is that what I'm referring to?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at your drawing, your current drawing. This is, I don't know. Road comes down, there's like a, you have a loop in there, like a...
Turnaround, no.
Not a turnaround, that, no.
Circle?
Yeah, circle.
No, that was never developed. This, yeah, this preliminary plan, there have been deviations from the preliminary plan, you know, dating back. And like I said, the, where the townhouses are shown, this alignment is consistent with the preliminary plan. But based on purchases of properties and re-subdivisions and different property owners wanting to do different things, the road has gone through kind of a job. And that's kind of, we're left with the last piece now. And as you can see on the plan, it does do, you know, a reverse curve. And we're essentially, we're just trying to get back on the original alignment.
Where are the setbacks on the lot? Well, 41 to 62.
On the preliminary plan?
Yeah, and the existing, yeah.
Yeah, those, those were 60 feet. But as you can see on this plan, those lots had a lot more depth than we had. And you can see the other lots, lots 63 through 86, those were the 30-foot setbacks.
Yeah, those are the...
So that's where I see we're complying with what was approved at the preliminary plan. So we're not going with anything smaller than wasn't previously approved. And this is really just a base...
But that, but the difference is, in my opinion, is that got clustered, you know, smaller lots and everything. But look at the green area, you have the open space in the back of it, you know what I mean? There's more. On the shore side?
Yeah, I see where you're saying, yes. Yep, and again...
There's a benefit to letting that happen, deserve that land. But with this, with that, why can't that road bend and go to the south a little bit more?
So...
It's got to go more.
Yeah, if you look at the grading plan, it's really, it's a really, it becomes like a one-on-three slope. It would just be uneconomical to build a road farther south. So we basically have it right now on the plateau, and then it's really, really fall off as you go to the south.
It looks like, oh, okay, if you're saying so, but I'm just looking at it on the drawing. Yeah, I see where it gets really steep, but it looks like you've got, from the edge of your road, it looks like there's about 60 feet before you get to where it starts to drop off.
And it depends where you are too. Because if you look at where this lot is, yes, sure, this road could have stayed a little bit farther south. But at that point, you're making these lots so deep that that wasn't really wanting to make those lots.
The reason I'm suggesting that is to create more, either front setback, more standard, you know, 30-foot standard type. But it would give you a little bit more in the back house on the other side of the house. In other words, you're making the lots a little bit deeper.
Correct.
By moving that road south a little bit.
Yeah, and we're certainly looking at what Stacy...
I think some board should be looking at on this. This is, you're jamming it. And I think it's well appreciated just denying lots, but somehow we've got to get this thing to be part of a homeowners association. It's part of the same project. There's no in and out anywhere else. It doesn't have other rigs. They're going out, they're all going out.
Correct.
The same road, you know? And I think that should be one. And I'm still confused with the, you know, how this is, who owns what? What part of this is being used for open space and transferred somewhere or something?
Correct. So the intent with not having the open space along the shore, because of the lessons that have been learned. And I think it's just better for homeowners to have the ability to maintain their property. So that's why we didn't propose the open spaces was shown on the preliminary plan. And we've relocated it, area showing these hashed areas, which, you know, I think it makes sense to have those as open spaces. There won't be development there. And by doing this, we maintain the 6.88 acres that it was required.
What is that square from looking at? It's like a... Just, I, in the curve of the road there, just south of it.
That's a house lot. So it's one house lot on the south side of the road. And that's another reason why we didn't keep the road south. Because that's a nice flat, and that's a nice lot that they wanted to deny.
So once you got past that house, I don't know, I'm just looking to try and get a little bit more room on those lots.
We can certainly, if there's any way to pull that, I mean, even 20, 30 feet, we can certainly look. Maybe once you get past Lot 9, because part of the comment about the hammerhead, I think we need to jog at least a portion of that road a little bit farther south. We'll certainly look at the geometry.
That would be a little bit blurb, I mean...
Some of this area a little bit farther south, that road south.
All right, is there anyone else wanting to speak? I'm sorry. Your way? Okay, we'll keep the public hearing open. I'm going to suggest we table this. Suggest you guys get together with the homeowners association, see if we can work something out. There are going to be neighbors in there, and Stacy's been there for 17 years, just about living there yourself. Maybe they can get something going, get it out of KPF where everybody's together.
Understood. Thank you.
There is a good 25 foot well. With the original development, that was the time stuff.
Oh, yeah, and this one, yes.
The breach of personal control.
Yeah.
You also need to see the whole thing really kind of relayed out based on the high water.
Understood.
And that, that one shows up, the actual one shows up.
Actual elevation, understood.
Can we supervise that?
Probably, I'm almost wondering, this is some sort of protective DC. A little more than just this people. There are issues with the ready commission for establishing and protecting trines. The development will be monitored.
Right, and we maintain the DC's required buffer and then some, because we all are sensitive to, you know, the effects of flooding.
No, I understand you're maintaining the buffer, but I'm talking about... Current conversation with DC regarding shore protection.
Understood.
Their view of that is very different than what was in this development condition. It's changed over the last two years.
So you're talking about tabling this to May 4?
I'm sorry.
Are you talking about tabling this application?
Well, whatever they want to do.
Or even...
Two weeks or...
I think we can give these comments addressed, the plans revised, and back to you for the lessons learned.
You guys should get it.
Members of the planning board, I respectfully suggest that two weeks is not enough time for the members of Coastal View to review this application in detail, which again, we were not informed of before like 24 hours. So we need more than two weeks to consider if they want to reach any kind of agreement.
You want letters? You should have received letters.
No. The individual homeowners received no notification of this proceeding. The HOA received notification seven days ago, and then the HOA board just notified the homeowners. I, as an individual homeowner, received zero notification of this proceeding.
We sent out manly per the town's requirements. You may not have been in that area, because it says, I think it's 300 feet, is that right? It's on the property itself. So you may not have been within that 300-foot area, but we did... So, you may not have bent within that 300-foot area, but we did send out manly.
Okay.
Is there a required sign posted at the end of the property or any of that?
I can't really read it.
Yeah.
Question is, was there a sign that should have been required to post it for the property to be developed at this time?
That's a long story. Yes and no. To have the sign up, it is not in the code. It's something the town is working on. Just prior to this meeting, we were discussing it. It's something that the town is going to putting signs. Right now, the requirement is it's posted in the newspaper, in the official town, you know, Webster Herald, which is the official town paper. It's on the website and mailings to everybody within 300 feet. More than the requirements, you know, for notification. But we're all in agreement with the signs and that's the thing that the town is working on. It has to be into the code before you can do it. And they're working on putting that in now.
Understood.
Good point though.
The other question is, I'm still unclear is if the board is going to require this development to be part of the HOA. It sounds like you're
Well, we're, I think the board is in full agreement, suggesting they should be.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
And that's, I mean, we can't make them, you know what I mean, in that regard, but I do suggest we do that. Get together with the homeowners and work something out.
Okay.
Okay, if they want more time, instead of May the fourth, we're on May the 18th.
All right.
Yeah, I think the last meeting in May is more appropriate.
Okay.
I think that, in my opinion, number one, we definitely want to see it included in the HOA. So, the HOA and these people need to get together. That's going to take a little bit of time. I want to see if these properties adhere to the same standards as the rest of the project. And I want to see a deeper setback, okay?
What did?
A deeper setback.
Oh.
Okay? Minimum, at least 45 feet, not 30 feet. But that's my opinion and that's what I would like.
Yeah, that's the idea, if we move that road to the south, then that'll upset the lots.
So, I don't see any way in the world that they could ever get all that accomplished in two weeks.
Okay. So, we'll make it, what is it, the 18th?
May.
All right, so, want to make a motion, Jeff?
Yeah, make a motion. Subdivision section five to May the 18th.
Okay, we need a second.
I have a second.
You want a second, all in favor?
Yeah.
All right. All right, okay, so, we're all set. So, we got about a month left to rely on before everything works out.
Thank you.
We won't close the public hearing. It's still open, so we'll continue what we want.
Can I speak before?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure. Right. Chris, Dale Dance. I don't know if most of you know me or not. Dale Dance, I've been with Hagon's for 49 years now. I don't know how many of you know me. I've been a part of Hagon family for many, many years. Stacy, you all know him, he's been a great partner with you and with Hagon's for many years. I think you all have a fairly high trust in Stacy being part of this. It's a different relationship we have with this as we did with Stacy in the first parts of this. I hope you have some faith in Stacy and the Hagon family in doing what's, what's right. It may not be perfect and I'm sorry we didn't have open communication. There was no intention for deception or hiding anything. And this, this year of COVID, it seems it's, it's not the same as it was years ago. See, I apologize for the feeling of being pushed through without proper communication because I understand that. So, I apologize for that. But we will, we try to have meetings every Friday. We will, I'm sure we will discuss these issues and hopefully we can work everything out. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. All right, I guess with that, we're, anything else? We're all set? Again, we'll leave the public hearing open, so if you just continue what I just proved we've left out. Thanks for coming in. With that, just No. We do it right now. Close again to permission for some, I got another thing in front of the desk. Pretty much same thing they do every year. Right now, they do have a lot of mulch and piles here. That's, it was telling me that they did $980,000 to this, sad.
Park lot's full of Allison.
Anyway, the mulch will be disappearing soon. All right? Everybody okay with doing this again?
I'm okay with it. It looks, they always look like
Oh, they maintain the front.
Okay, I guess, Tony.
All in favor?
I just, I just have a question. I'm pretty sure it's always been, they said Mother's Day, Memorial Day, Father's Day and
Yeah.
Does this sound like it's going to be all summer or?
Often not for special occasions, you know, special times.
What they, they hit their angel plantings and shrubbery and stuff out there, all, all spring, summer, fall. That's what this is all about, isn't it?
It's all, yes.
Yeah. It's something that they do every year. It's been very, very good.
Yeah, they've been real good since day one. This all started when, when they first got the approvals there, we said not to have outdoor storage in front of the store and so on and so forth. And they invited by it and then little by little, they wanted people to put things out for special events. Lot tends to have sales. Well, it might not be Mother's Day or Fourth of July or whatever, so they can still do it this way, you know? They have lots of specific days. We don't pass, that's all. All right, so we're all okay with that then?
Yeah.
All right, we'll send a letter to them. All right, with that, I guess we're all set. Thanks for coming in.
Hunter Max is likely dividing the farm store. Holy Father.